Good evening, everybody. Thank you for being here tonight for our public hearing on the budget for 2018-2019. Could we have roll call, please, Mrs. Cogly?
Mr. Henigan.
Here.
Mrs. Heinz.
Here.
Mr. Durman.
Here.
Mr. Loop.
Here.
Mr. Harold.
Here.
Mr. Nation.
Here.
Mr. Jeter.
Here.
Mrs. Seeley.
Present.
Mrs. Drucker.
Here.
Mr. Bentoncourt.
Here.
Mr. Womack.
Here.
Mr. Hershey.
Here.
Mrs. Mullet.
Present.
Mr. Kuzan. Mrs. Bellisario.
Thank you, Mrs. Cogly. Would everyone please rise and join as Mr. Womack says the invocation and leads us into the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us bow our head, please. Father God, we thank you for this time that we gather in your name. We thank you for your infinite mercy, your wisdom, Father, that you impart to us and help us to submit to that tonight and do what's best in the interest of the young people of the parish, Lord. We commit this to you in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Womack.
Yes.
Tonight, we are pleased to present our school board budgets for the fiscal year 2018-2019. Our budgets are reviewed each year by the external auditors, LaPorte CPA, business advisors. This happens during the course of our annual fiscal statement audit. During this audit, the budgets for the school board are reviewed for content, presentation, and for compliance with all recommendations of the Louisiana Local Government Budget Act. The Local Government Budget Act, found in Louisiana, provides statutes 39:1301-1315, directs political subdivisions of the state as to the manner in which the budgets of the political subdivisions shall be adopted, implemented, and amended. The school board has received no findings on the presentation of the original budget in the past, and the budget has always been in compliance with the law. The school board is also required to submit the budgets annually to Louisiana Department of Education for approval. The school board has received no findings on the budget from the Louisiana Department of Education. The school board has decided to revise the format of the budget as of August 15th based on public feedback we received. This is only a change in presentation, and the numbers provided in the budget did not change. The school board thrives to be transparent and considers recommendations which yield greater clarity. The budget we are presenting tonight reflects the revised format. I would like to remind everyone present tonight that this is a public budget hearing, which means this is the opportunity for the public, members of the public, to come before this school board and the school system administration to ask questions or comments or have comments about the proposed budget for the fiscal year 2018-2019. School board members will not discuss the budget tonight. Our opportunity to do so will be during the committee-as-a-whole meeting September 6 and again at the full board meeting September 13. On those two evenings, the budget will be on the agenda, and it will be up for discussion and a vote by this school board. As questions are asked by board members of the public tonight, I will direct the appropriate staff members to answer the questions, but please keep in mind, the questions must be directly related to the proposed budget before us. So now, I'm going to turn it over to Superintendent Foles for the budget message and the process. Superintendent Foles.
Thank you, Ms. Mullet. Good evening, board members and people in the audience tonight. Thank you for being here. As we all know, tonight is the public hearing on the budget, and we wanted to share a few slides with you to help get the process started. Also important to remember that our budget is a year-round, day-to-day budget that we are constantly reviewing, monitoring, and discussing, both as staff as well as from the public input. Some slides I would like to share with you tonight. First off is our general revenue source slide. These are our main revenue sources for our school system for fiscal year 2018-2019. You can see local funds are 98.92 percent, state 50.96 percent, and less than 1 percent comes from the federal government. The next slide, you will see our general fund revenue sources, as well as the amounts broken down by local, state, and federal, as well as our total projected revenues. So first column, you can see the second is the original budget for 2018-2019, and the third column is the difference between the two, local, state, federal, and then total revenues. Certainly, all this is available. I think it's important for everyone to see this slide. This slide shows our projected expenditures. It also shows that 76.7 percent of our budget goes towards instructional costs. Louisiana Department of Education requires at least 70 percent of general fund expenditures be spent on instruction. This 76.7 represents a large amount of our budget, goes directly towards the classroom to meet the needs of our close to 39,000 students. As you can see on this chart, 9.8 percent goes to maintenance. We have 55 schools, and our school system and our schools some date back to 1900s. This state does not give us any money whatsoever for maintenance or repairs, so all of our monies must come from our local funds, and we do our best to ensure that our schools are well-maintained, safe campuses for our students as well as our employees. You can see 8.4 percent is for transportation. We currently transport about 31,000 students each and every day, and those buses you see on the road travel 29,000 miles each and every day. 6 percent for administrative costs and another 2.5 percent for other services. Some big-picture highlights of the budget. We are not projecting any growth for our sales tax, nor are we projecting any growth for our property tax. Past 12 months have shown no growth over the prior year in sales tax, so we will continue to monitor on a monthly basis. As for ever lower in property taxes, we are basing these numbers on the latest tax roll that has been provided to us by our assessor's office. We do see the MFP increasing by $890,000. We believe this increase is due to weighted student total. If you recall, weights are given to students who qualify as low-income, career and technical, disabled, and gifted, so we're projecting close to $900,000 increase on that. Our expenditures. Salaries for our employees will increase by $2.8 million because of the pay raises that are in place. Talk about that a little bit more in a second. We also anticipate approximately $664,000 in retirement contributions due to increase in employer rates. We are projecting a decrease in workers' comp of $168,000 due to changes in our working compensation employment premiums. Wanted to share this with you. This is average classroom teacher salary based upon 2016-17 numbers. As you can see, it's $53,000. These numbers make our school system sixth in the state of Louisiana in teacher pay. At the bottom, it says, it's a little small print, but it says, "does not include $1,000 raise from last year," nor does it include the $500 raise for this year. So that $53,000 you see does not include the $1,000 or the $500, because these numbers come from the state a little bit behind. This is the 16-17 numbers, and I'm showing you 17-18 as well as 18-19. Important to remember, too, that teacher salaries no longer just their base in St. Tammany Parish. St. Tammany now adds $500 performance stipends to teachers who are highly effective, and a teacher can get a $500 base pay addition for a higher degree. Other districts have their own formulas, so that's why we have to go with this information from the state until the state sends out the newest, latest, greatest numbers. Fiscal responsibility. It's important to note that our school system has received the AA bond rating by Standard and Poor's. This is considered the highest rating of any school boards in the state of Louisiana. Our school system has also been recognized nationally, as Ms. Mullet mentioned, for excellence in financial reporting for the last 30 consecutive years by the Governmental Finance Office Association, as well as the Association of School Business Officials International. As I mentioned at the beginning, this budget is extremely fluid. We constantly are monitoring it. We are constantly meeting on it. Our budget updates, as required by law, will be provided to the board in both December and March. And also, it's important to note that this budget will be amended if there's a 5 percent variance in revenues, expenditures, or beginning fund balance. A special thank you to Terri Prevost and her staff for the work they've done preparing the budget, and look forward to any public comments tonight, as well as board discussion on the 6th and the 13th. Thank you, Ms. Mullet.
Thank you, Mr. Foles. Okay, what we're going to do now is I'm going to open the floor to receive public comment on the proposed budget. Remember, your comments or questions must be asked, you know, and we are talking tonight strictly about the proposed budget for the 2018-2019 fiscal year. I did have seven people asked to speak prior to tonight, so I actually have those listed first, those first seven, and then anyone else who wanted, no one else signed up. Okay, so you have, okay.
First one?
We'll start with them, and if anyone else signs up after we...
First speaker is Alicia Bro.
Okay. Ms. Bro, if you'd just stand up and come to the podium and say your name. Thank you.
I have some handouts if you care if you have to look along, one for each member. Thank you. [inaudible]
My name is Alicia Bro, and I have one thing in particular I would like to ask about. As I've talked to people who teach in the schools, I understand that more and more there are problems with having sufficient funds available for instructional purposes, and that is not only instructional materials like paper, ink for computers or printers, but also their under instructional budget, as I understand it, to work. Our programs such as the ABA method of teaching for autistic or special kinds of instruction for dyslexic students, and if I'm wrong, please correct me, but I understand that would be under instructional as well. So it's kind of a moving target. Having not had Excel spreadsheets, it's very difficult to make the side-by-side comparisons that are necessary for me or really any citizen who's trying to look at the budget. And I've put some more public records requests in and hope in the next few days to have a better handle on it, but in looking at what I've looked at, I noticed that in the last five years, there has been a decrease of funding for instructional budget. It's the very top line on the handout that I gave you, top page, top line, and there's a particular account number associated with it, the 1100-500,000-M. In some years, it's called the instructional budget, in some, it's called the school supplemental budget, but I gather by the number code, it's the same thing. That particular amount from 2013 to your most current budget has fallen $1,103,000, sorry, $1,103,172. At the same time, revenues have been up. They've been increasing every year, and student numbers have been up. I think about 3,000 a year. I tried to get all the numbers, but an average of anywhere from 12,000 to 15,000 more students in those years. And yet, you are budgeting, as I see your latest one, over $1 million less for instruction, and I would like to know why, and wonder if you might reconsider that, because I think it's a need that very much needs to be met.
Okay. Would you like...
Sure.
Okay. Ms. Prevost, would you start?
Okay. The instructional budgets are per student amount. It's based on the number of students at the school. It ranges from kindergarten 30.75, grades 1 to 3 40.75, grades 4 to 8 40.75, and grades 9 to 12 41 dollars. Those amounts were increased in 17-18 by $2. There was, you said over the last five years?
From 13.
From 13?
From 12-13 to now.
Yeah. What number, you're looking at budgeted numbers or actual numbers?
Well, you don't post actuals. That's part of the problem.
Yes, ma'am. They are posted on the legislative auditor website. We're audited every year. They're on there.
No, they're not easily found. Not side-by-side is required by the law, but be that as it may.
Okay. We're not going to start arguing, but let's just keep going.
Yeah. Okay. Can I answer the side-by-side question?
Yes, you may.
Okay. Side-by-side presentation in the budget is not required by the law, other than what we're showing, the original budget, and we're required to show the actual received, actual spent to date of the date of the budget, plus what we estimate for the rest of the remaining of that fiscal year. We have shown those numbers every year. Headings may have been hard to understand, so we changed that. We clarified that. So those numbers have always been presented. But as far as the instructional budget, if you're looking at budgeted numbers, it's going to depend on the number of students at the school, and it may go up and down, because for each student, they get a certain dollar figure.
So you're saying over $1 million in difference has to do with the difference in the amounts, given the numbers of children of each different age?
I don't have $1 million, because I'm showing for, what year are you starting with?
I'm looking at an amount in 2012-13.
Okay.
For the final revised budget figure of $2,672,172. And for your latest budget, and again, it's what you're projecting or what you're proposing, it's only $1,334,173.
Okay. I can give you actual numbers. The budget, I will clarify that for those years, 12 and 13, we allowed schools to carry over budgets that weren't spent. So there was a carryover that was accumulating. I believe in 14-15, we discontinued that practice, so they had to spend it. So that's why the budgets are dropping, because you're seeing carryovers from maybe three or four years. Some schools weren't spending the money. This is a supplemental instruction budget. All of our, we cover all the costs for the schools, textbooks, salaries, and benefits. Everything's covered. This is a supplemental budget for the principal to use at their discretion for instructional purposes. So the reason those years were higher, like I said, you may have had carryovers from three, four years. Some schools saved the money to buy computers and different things, so they built up that budget. But as the years went on, we did the actual only for the one year. So it's based on the number of students, and those numbers have been fairly consistent.
Have I misunderstood what I'm looking at on the 12-13 budget? I'm looking at your final revised budget, which I assume has to do with what the school board is budgeting, not what monies might be in the accounts of each individual school. And as I'm seeing here, what apparently was the final revised budget was over $2 million, was $2,672.
Right, but that's a budget, ma'am. That doesn't mean it was spent. 12-13, the actual spending was $1.7 million by schools. So they may have had 2.1 available, but they did not spend that. So that's a budget, and like I said, some of the schools were carrying over, saving up their budgets, so we would budget the entire amount plus carryovers, but it may not have been spent. So it would roll to the next year.
Well, as I read the Attorney General, having weighed in on this, you are required to do side-by-sides, and you are required to do actuals when you present a budget. You have done it this year for the first time ever, and I commend you on that.
That's not true, ma'am.
However, it has not been a part, they're online. They're easily found. It has not been something that you have done for the last seven years.
Yes, we have, ma'am. The number that's created that shows as the revised budget for the year before, that number is actual to date plus estimated remaining for the year. That's what the law says. It does not say you have to have separate columns. We did present that to make it more clear, but we do comply with the law.
Well, I beg to disagree, but that's a whole other thing. So as you look at this, my question had to do with why so little is being appropriated or budgeted for the coming year in instructional budget? And then, when I started looking at the general ledger, as I understand accounting, and I'm an artist, I'm not an accountant, but my husband is an accountant, I believe that when you have a numbered account on your budget, there should be a corresponding numbered account in your general ledger. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And so, as I look at this number, at least two years, you have budgeted around $1,500.500, and there's zero amount in your general ledger, and I'd like to know why that happened.
You have to look, that's a holding budget. There are two lines that combine to that in the actual budgets. It doesn't have to be the exact account. We call it instructional. We have two actual accounts that combine to come to that total. We have to have an account for materials and supplies and an account for equipment.
But they're tied to a number, are they not? They're tied to this number.
They're tied to that one budget. The Department of Education requires us to break down numbers in a certain way.
Right.
We have a coding system. So the budget is one line, but there are two lines that combine to go to that budget. We use a roll-up method, so the schools charge to one line, but their actual expenditures are broken out over two lines.
So that would explain, you're saying, why I cannot find any money going out of the account on the general ledger?
It's, I can give you the codes. I'll be glad to give that to you afterwards.
I would like to know that, because it appears to be hidden in the minutia and not easily found, and I understood that that was the reason that the Local Government Budget Act was actually passed, to make it transparent, and this is not transparent at all. Okay, that's, for the most part, my questions. Thank you.
Ms. Bro, can Mr. Javie mention the student population? I know you mentioned like our growth. Let him, do you have... Ms. Foles, I don't have those numbers with me, but she said 3,000. I know, like...
It's around 250.
250. We've been averaging about 250 or students per year. Per year. Growth, not, yeah.
It's interesting, because I looked it up, and I came up with very, it's very hard to find. It's not easily...
Well, I do a PowerPoint every year to every chamber group, so I can easily give you those numbers.
I would love that.
And we talk about each year, you know, because we want to grow, and, you know, in areas like that, so we have it every year in a PowerPoint.
Well, and St. Tammany is the fastest-growing parish?
Right. There was actually an article today about home sales and growth and everything that goes with that.
And the population has increased an average of 2.8 percent for the last eight years, so I would think that would have a correlation between student numbers, at least some.
I'll get y'all the numbers to make sure.
I appreciate it.
And I want Dr. Sanford to answer your question about dyslexia programs, because you had mentioned that at the beginning of your talk, and special ed monies for that.
Well, and the ABA as well, because the recent problem at Covington, I believe, if there had been that very proven method of dealing with autistic children, we might have had the problem.
Well, I'll have her answer the dyslexia. I certainly can't comment on the other right now.
Right. I understand.
We do 504 screening, and it falls under our budget for, within the 504. We use a screener, recommended, and provide services, professional development. We use Project REED as part of the remediation and instruction for those students. As far as ABA therapists, we do have services available within our district, and I know that there was a recent legislation passed that authorizes school districts to reexamine their practices.
Correct.
I recently was talking to a couple of parents whose four-year-old...
But we need to stay on the budget.
Well, okay. Well, it has to do with budgeting. It does have to do with budgeting for special needs kids, for programs for them, and so my understanding is that that's not been available, and I think it's an important thing to include. So thank you.
And I'll get you that student, I'm going to get you that student population.
Appreciate it.
Mr. Javie, who's up next, please?
Carlos Yngst. I hope I pronounced it correctly.
I think you did.
There you go.
Hi, I'm Carlos Yngst. I've lived in Slidell since 1992, when my wife brought me home, so I'm from everywhere else but here, but she brought me here, so I've enjoyed it. We've put, we've had three kids come through our schools here, and we've enjoyed it. I just wanted to thank you for updating the 2018-2019 proposed budget to contain the last year's actuals collected to date and the estimating remaining for the year. That gives us a great deal more visibility on how we're doing things. I'm also going to say that that part is what brings us into compliance, and I don't want to have the argument, but I'm kind of a literal guy, and so in the law, it says you must have, after January 1, 2011, a clearly presented, side-by-side, detailed comparison of such information, and then it goes on down, both year-to-date actual and estimates for the remainder of the year. So that's how, that's how I'm reading it.
Okay.
But, not a problem. I mean, obviously, the information was there, because to present the total, you had to have had the other two numbers, probably just compressed and hid those columns for presentations.
And could I have Ms. Prevost just elaborate on that?
Yes.
Because we were in compliance, I just want, how...
Yeah, exactly how you described it.
Compliance.
But the law does not say the two columns have to be presented. There's no comma there that says you have to present the actual received to date and then the estimated surplus. So we just combine the columns into one amount, like a lot of school districts do.
Right, so we won't have that argument.
But it's not, it's a viewpoint now.
So, but having that information in there, certainly, all right, let's call it going above and beyond. There is absolutely nothing wrong with going above and beyond.
Correct.
We like it. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
So, and still thinking along the lines of increased visibility, we hope actually that you're a restore, looking at the original budget, because that tells a story when you look at the original budget that was set up last year, and then the amended or the final budget as we're coming into this year. There were some changes in, basically, in the instructional budget, and that's where you'll see me focused mostly, okay? On the instructional budget, we reduced the instructional by almost $1 million, but we managed to spend five of that on the non-instruction, you know? And so, it was a net saving, yes, but I would sure love to have seen us spend money on supplies. I don't understand why we see these supply lists come for our kids, and, you know, in the particular district I'm in, we have 77 percent free and assisted lunch. These families, they have to come up with some hard-earned money to bring that in. I think we're affluent enough to do that, so I'd love to see us when we have these savings, rather than say, we'll just save it for next year. No, you can get the supplies in for these kids, you know, and for these teachers. I mean, you ever go to Walmart and see teachers with grocery carts full of supplies? I mean...
I'm going to let Dr. Sanford answer the...
Sure.
If you have a, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you, but if you're finished with that supply list and explain the supply list and how that's always been, and if Mrs. Prevost needs to elaborate on the spender...
Right, because we're seeing notes come home saying, hey, because the school board's not giving us copy, paper money, we need you guys to pony up. It's voluntary, but, you know, it's still an ask. Why are we doing that?
Dr. Sanford.
We've had school supply lists for a number of years, and we are definitely trying to economize and cut down on cost. Schools can always supplement using their instructional budgets, any materials that are not included. We have allocated different funds at different levels to kind of supplement all of the instruction in the classrooms.
And we actually tried to clean up the supply list this year, and we had some definite growing pains with that as well, but I see your point of that, and I think if we're more streamlined in what we're doing with the supply list and more as a system asking across the parish, I think it's beneficial, and that's where we're trying to get with that. Right, and if we're pushing down the budget at the school level, and that's fine, because obviously, they're in the trenches. They know what they need. Yeah. And we agree with that. Just, can we encourage them to actually spend it and not carry it over? Yeah, we stopped it. What do you, we stopped that.
Yeah, a couple of years ago, we did stop that.
We appreciate that. Yes.
Yeah.
So, looking at that, it's, we've answered that particular part, and then the, I'm seeing some other things in the regular instruction program that just give me cause for pause a little bit. Teacher salaries actually went down, you know, in gross dollars, okay, not on individuals, by about $2.7 million, and so did the group insurance by $7.2 million, which was great, okay? But that was partially offset by retiree group insurance going up by $1.1 million, okay? So it just, I know we got the raise factored in and everything, but after looking at it, it just still looks kind of like a flat line.
Go ahead, Ms. Prevost. I think somebody was retired, retirees that...
Yeah, I'm not sure what numbers are you looking at, because our retiree insurance is the same. There's no increase there. We're projecting the same number.
That's a comparison from the original budget we looked at last year.
Oh, you're looking at the original, yeah. We're self-insured.
And bringing that forward, right. We're self-insured.
Right. So our claims expense, we don't have a crystal... Right, so our claims expense, we don't have a crystal ball, obviously, so we don't always know. We base it off the year before, but when we end the year, sometimes we end it better than the year before, so we can adjust the budget down. So that's probably the case when you're looking at that. As far as teacher salaries, when we budget in July, we don't know, we haven't always hired all our replacements. When people retire, they go out at a higher salary and they come in at a lower salary. There's no way for us to budget that. So usually, at the end of the year, we're gonna have a variation in salaries, usually positively. So that's an explanation for that.
Because usually, when I see that pattern where you're flatlining, but you are giving raises along the way-
Right.
It's generally an indicator of a brain drain. That is, you lose more experienced teachers who tend to be more well-paid, okay? And then you backfill with folks who, well, maybe they're beginning. I mean, that's normal attrition.
It is.
And normal attrition isn't a flat line, okay? Normal attrition, you still have growth, because overall, everyone making more money. In this case, it just has the indicator that we are losing more experienced teachers, really, than normal. So that's a concern, and that's all I'm bringing up.
I don't know if it's than normal, because the state is seeing pretty much the same challenges. Certainly, whenever, you know, you lose teachers with lots of years of experience, it hurts our system. But I can tell you, I think we had 600 people for 125 people jobs at job fair, and I'm hearing really good about the new teachers that we hired. So all of us were first-year teachers at one time or another. So we're gonna support them as well.
I applaud that. I applaud you for that. I really, I really couldn't do that job. It's, I appreciate your help. So anyway, that's just a general concern I have with that. And if we walk forward into the new budget, okay, for the proposed original budget, and then pull back at a higher level, I'm seeing the percentage of instructional to non-instructional actually starting to change. And the numbers are really kind of small right now, because we were 61%, 62% on instructional, on the budget as proposed, okay? I'm not talking about the 70-30 formula or anything like that. I'm just as proposed and posted out there. And it's now dropping to 60-ish. So it just, that's another indicator for me, okay? When you, when we're working, our direct scope of work here is teaching our kids. That's our teachers. So that's instructional. I see it. But how efficient we are is the overhead piece. So if indeed, you're going down on the direct side, you're going up on the indirect side. And that tells me we're slipping a little bit there. If we could somehow figure out a way, push more money on the instructional side, make that happen, and we'll be better for it.
Just so we're clear, the way the Department of Ed calculates instruction, what's considered an instructional cost, would be the line that says total instruction, but you also count pupil support, which is in supporting services. You count staff support and school administration, because that's your principals and assistant principals. So you have to add those three lines to the total instruction as well.
Would love to see that posted on the board's page. You know, we can use that as a magic decoder ring. That'd be great.
Okay. That's how we get the 70%.
Thank you very much. So, other questions, small questions. But I'm looking at revenue, and it's just a picky thing, but one of the larger categories is miscellaneous. You have many other categories that aren't miscellaneous for smaller amounts, and I'm just wondering what, what's in there? What's miscellaneous revenue?
The bulk of it is money that comes in reimbursements from schools for salaries that they cover on a particular timesheet. That's what the bulk of it is. We have, you know, miscellaneous payments on all kinds of things, but that's the bulk of that money, what that relates to. Schools re-
That's coming back, revenue.
Correct.
You want to explain that again?
Schools sometimes pay for salaries themselves, so they reimburse the central office with salaries and benefits, and a check comes in and it goes into miscellaneous. We have to record the salaries themselves in the salaries, so we can't net, the Department of Ed does not allow us to, so it goes into miscellaneous.
You have an example?
Yeah. Before and after care is a good example on that. That's one line.
So they ask you to do that at a gross level rather than a net level?
That's correct. We're required to do it that way.
Hey, I get it. I used to work at a savings alone, and we just did it at the net level. We're no longer here, so I get it. So, anyway.
So one of those is before and after care, the schools, and then they-
Yeah, it's all different things, different-
That's one example.
Different timesheet payments from different employers.
Okay, it's just a facility to ensure maximum visibility, then. I get it. Thank you. Okay. It's just in my, in my world, whenever we had miscellaneous, it meant, well, just go get, you get all the copies of everything, because that's a 100% audit, you know? You're gonna get tagged. So, and then in the business services section, I see that we have an amount set aside for the internal audit function. However, we show as zero last year, this year that's closing. And my question there is, have we really gone a whole year without an internal audit function? I mean, that scares me to death.
Yes, we have. We have, we're audited by many different other agencies, but we decided to put that position back into the budget and-
Well, I saw it go back in, okay? Then I'll work you a little bit different on that. It's like, my background is federal contractor.
Sure.
Okay? And granted, we're not a federal bureaucracy here where we need the legion of internal auditors that we have.
Right.
Okay? But you're not an unregulated thing, all right? You're regulated a lot, a lot more than private business.
Sure.
I would say. So I don't understand how one is enough. I don't understand why you wouldn't have two or three, okay? You would have a lead and you would have a couple of assistants.
Well, we certainly have people, like, I mean, Terry, you can explain the different job descriptions that people-
We actually have two people in our school. Most of the internal audit function is related to schools, because we monitor those pretty closely, and we have two people in school accounting, that they do go out and work with the schools, and they look at, they look at their transactions almost daily. We look at everything they're doing. So that's a part of that function. It used to be under the internal audit division, and now it's under the business affairs division. But the internal auditor will be an independent function that would be auditing, but basically, their work and then the schools and then anything else that the superintendent would like, would like them to look at.
Right, I'd have to agree. The internal audit function should be independent. And to that end, I would say that the internal audit function should be reporting directly to the board here, okay? And anything, any reports that are turned in to the board would certainly, would go to you, sir. Okay? It's just the way I, again, I worked in the commercial side, that's how we did it. We always made sure we went up, up and over, okay? But full visibility, everyone got to see it, you know? That's just the way it was. We operated that way, and in the end, it just worked best. So anyway, I think that's the end of my comments. I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Javie?
Yes, ma'am. Again, I hope I pronounced this correctly. Shelto Richardson?
Let me get set up just a second. First of all, I would like to thank the board for hosting tonight. This is very important, that you open up discussions such as this to the public. I've had the opportunity to talk to a few of the board members about this very topic, and it means a lot to me. Ms. Seeley, you have been intentional about making sure we are heard. You've given a good ear to us. Mr. Tucker, you as well. You were thought-provoking the other night. With that said, I also wanted to issue a thank you on behalf of the entire board for putting those actuals on the budget. I know several weeks ago, I had printed a copy, they weren't there. It meant a lot to me to see those there now. And yes, I have questioned whether we are adhering to LGBA's statutes, and I'm not going to get into a punctuation debate about the very wording of this statute. It's clear to me what it says, comma or semicolon, it doesn't matter. I think as an elected official, I would like to come before you and have you consider that the community, three people have come up tonight and said, this is important that you have side-by-side. I'm not interested in punctuation. I'm interested in transparency, and I'm asking you to please hear our hearts loud and clear. We all can agree that we want what's best for these children. If I may, though, I'm not gonna read the statute. We've already done that twice. But I did notice one thing that I'd like to ask a question about. On the actuals, now that we have them, and again, thank you, I noticed that on the newest version of our proposed budget, the original budget for 1718 no longer exists. Could somebody please address why that is? Ms. Prevost?
It does exist. It will be on the final budget, so it will be presented next month. We usually show the original and the final budget. We don't show the original on the original budget for the next year.
But, I'm sorry-
It's not required.
The ones printed online are all in the same format, but for some reason, this year, well, and again, I thank the board for adding actuals. I just don't understand why it's so difficult to keep the original 2017-18 budget column in its place where it was, happily there, so that we could get that side-by-side comparison. I mean, was the paper not big enough? I'm not being rude, I assure you. I'm asking a question. I would happily print on bigger paper.
It'll be very small, but we could consider that. I mean, if Mr. Fols and the board would like it, we could do that. It will be in the final budget, the actual final, that'll be presented, it'll be, it'll show the final budget for 1718 and the original budget for 1718. We always have a second budget.
Well, thank you.
Sure.
This is important to me. I know many people know that I am a candidate, and, but I'm also a citizen, and I'm a concerned citizen. And this side-by-side comparison is so important, yes, I believe it is the law. I believe it promotes transparency. It puts the public behind me in a position to actually ask the right questions and understand the why behind what you're proposing as a board. It also puts you in a position to also ask the right questions and make informed decisions. I did have a question, I have, and I could be wrong, and I would love clarification. My understanding is that prior year actuals have never been provided. Is there any way that that could be changed?
Again, if the superintendent of the board would like us to add, you're referring to 1617 information, actual?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, I mean, if they would like that information, it could be added.
Okay. Again, as a citizen, I just think this information is important, especially, I am aware that very few people come to this meeting, and I just believe that the more transparent you are, believe it or not, I think more people would become involved. They just need to understand what they're seeing. I'd like to go on and explain further why this is additionally important to me. These numbers do help us see what's called a variance, and I believe you'd actually already mentioned the fact that the law does say that if there's a 5% variance in an expenditure, the superintendent is required to file an amendment. I do have a question. Have we ever filed an amendment with our budget? I don't know the answer.
We always file the final budget, it's always amended, so there's always one, but we have in the past done multiple amendments during the year.
You have?
Yes, not for the last couple of years. We've been pretty dead-on with our numbers until the end. A lot of the numbers, you can't tell until, because we are self-insured on health insurance. Those numbers don't come from the actuary to the very end, like July, so it's very hard to budget that. So we do that final budget and present that at the September meeting. So that's gonna be as close to final as we can get with the budget, because we don't close our books to August 31st for the year before.
I just feel with an organization as big as this, amendments are a given. They are going to happen. I think it's pretty amazing if you don't have an amendment or even a change of sorts. And I only say this because, to me, as a citizen, it tells me that you are monitoring this document. It's a living and breathing document, and you can't possibly predict every number that comes your way. I run a much smaller organization, and even I have to, on a smaller scale, adjust my numbers with time. So that's why these, this 5% variance is very important. So again, the original budget from 2017 coupled with the actuals helps us see that number clear. The next question I have with these actuals, I'd like to know if the board is, if their interest, or if they intend on correcting the previous budget so that we can show the year-over-year actuals. Right now, they don't have them, so that's why I'm asking.
Which budgets were you talking about being corrected? I mean, you're talking about, we can't do the original again. In the final budget that I'm presenting in September, it will be in the form, the new format.
Okay.
That's what you were talking about, the two new columns?
Yes.
Right, yes.
Yeah.
It will be in the new format. And then going forward, we will.
Mr. Carlos has stole my thoughts on the auditor. And my only thing is, I did also notice that we didn't spend any dollars on that. And I think, all I want to say to that is that internal auditing just keeps us all honest. It puts, it tells us, the community, that you are operating above reproach, and I simply just want to make that statement at this point. My next question revolves the teacher salaries. I would like to also issue another level of gratitude, if I may, to the board. I just actually read an article in the paper regarding the fact that you are doing a second year step-up to their increases, and I do praise you for these efforts. And I'm an analyst. I went to the numbers, I wanted to get an idea of what this meant, because the article really doesn't explain that very well and understandably so. You also have quite a pay scale chart there that would be impossible to put in a newspaper article. But as I took a look at this proposed budget, the average percentage of change was a little, it was alarming to me. If I may put this in perspective, item number 1105, our kindergarten teachers, the average percent of change was .92. Elementary teachers, which is item 1110, they got a .92% change as well. Then we have secondary teachers, I'm not sure what they did, but they got only an 88, .88%. It's, that just tells me it's less than 1%. This does not even cover the cost of insurance premiums or the cost of living. And it just, this is a very tender subject to me. I oversee multiple schools. I've overseen entire districts up in Chicago and Kansas, not in the private sector, please keep that in mind, not the public. With nothing short of blood, sweat, and tears, I have poured my life into my schools, putting my teachers first at all times. As a citizen, I'm asking this board to consider doing more for these teachers. When you take your average salary that you posted, my math was spot-on. We're talking about an increase of 500 to $1,000. And Superintendent Fols, I have the utmost respect, before I say what I have to say for your position, your oversight, you have a sleepless job, a thankless job. I've seen, I've overseen multiple schools, and quite frankly, listening to you, you are a very good listener. I was impressed with that. So with that said, I just, as I dug into the historical records of our budget, it was alarming for me to find that in eight years, there was an eight-year period where there was a teacher freeze on increases, but with, but you still got your 2.5 increase. And this just, it goes against my code of ethics. And please understand, I am one person standing before you, but I'd like to tell you, I have teachers, community leaders have said, my raise was actually negative this year. And I just, we can do better. We can do better. Especially when, and Ms. Alicia has brought this up as well, that we have teachers asking for supplies, for copy paper, they have GoFundMe accounts. We are in a very blessed parish. We have amazing teachers. And I do believe our board, that your interest is to do what's best for these children, but in order to do that, you have to be willing to do what's best for these teachers. We have to do more.
Yeah. I appreciate your comments, and I think one thing we can all do as well, if I can, can I say, you're okay? Is, I think everybody might have read that the governor is considering maybe 2.75 for the first time in-
Wow.
-10, 11 years. So I hope that we can all get behind that as well, that with money that each school that as well, that with money that each school system is supposed to get every year, we haven't gotten in the last ten years, so certainly that could help us as well with any kind of teacher's raise, and hopefully the money that does come from the state, they don't earmark it for other things and allow us to use it for teacher salaries, so as well as locally, if we can help on the state level, certainly will help as well. I think our salaries for teachers were frozen, how many years, Mr. Javio?
Two years.
Two years.
Ma'am, I think she said eight, that's not correct.
I want to comment that that's not accurate.
That's not correct.
Yeah.
And I'll be glad, I'll be glad to provide numbers to Ms. Richardson if she would like of the pay increases that all employees have received since two thousand eleven, and there's seemed to be a common thread out there that nobody's gotten any money for seven or eight years, and that's just not true, and I'll be glad to show you those numbers.
And I appreciate that, and again, teachers, they show their pay stubs, they show their pay stub.
I'd love you to get that information from him as well, because there's many things that go into a teacher's deductions, you can change your deductions year to year, you could have a change in your health insurance coverage, who you cover, so looking at those numbers would be helpful to you as well for Mr. Javio.
Indeed, it would be, and I appreciate that, and certainly thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Richardson.
Robert Broome.
Thank you, Madam President, and members of the school board, and superintendent.
You might have to speak up a little bit, your voice is...
I'm doing my best.
I hear you go.
Hi, my name is Robert Broome from Slidell, and I have some remarks and questions about the eighteen nineteen school board budget. The proposed budget for eighteen nineteen shows that the board is managing the available funds to provide a quality education for all our students in the parish. With this budget, the board is addressing a major challenge, improving the safety of all our students. I'm pleased to congratulate the board on this initiative, even though it requires one-time funds to get it started, but it has started, and the public needs to recognize this and support this initiative in the future, I know I do. I have found that looking at the budget for any one year is like viewing one scene in a movie, it's interesting, but you don't get the plot. According to, well, we need to look at budgets over several years to understand what is happening. According to the independent auditor, in sixteen seventeen, the general fund increased by four point eight million dollars, largely due to an increase in the state MFP allocation. Regrettably, no such increase is predicted for eighteen nineteen in the proposed budget, with one exception previously noted, that relies on one-time funds, this budget is a standstill budget. Revenues are largely out of the board's hands, while tax renewals may occur in the future, the board cannot really ask for additional revenues beyond what is currently being collected. However, the needs of the parish are significant, and they're changing all the time, and this needs to be reflected in our budget. Old programs need to be sunsetted, new challenges need to be addressed, and the board needs to make these decisions, and the public needs to see these changes in the budgets over the next several years. Twenty eighteen nineteen looks like a standstill year, these years happen. The board and the administration needs to make sure we rise to the coming challenges and that future budget priorities reflect these challenges. I do have several questions regarding the proposed budget. I noted a significant drop in both the group health insurance and the workman compensation costs. Congratulations to the excellent risk management by the administration. Could the administration explain how this was accomplished and whether they expect similar drops in the future?
Pete, you want to go first?
I was going to let Terry talk a little bit about the health insurance, and then I'll chime in.
All right, sounds good.
The health insurance, we're actually not projecting that to drop, we're just, right, we're uncertain, like I just stated to the other person, we're self insured, so we can't look in the future, we have to base it off of last year, but based off our current trend, we budgeted a health insurance contingency over with our community disaster loan money that can be used for benefits, just so we didn't tie up more of general fund for this, it's just a contingency, we don't know if it's going to happen, so that's booked over there. So that's the decrease you see, we booked one million dollars over in the CDL fund as a contingency, and I'll let Mr. Javio talk about the workers' comp.
And before I do that, though, the health insurance, as Ms. Prevost stated, we are self insured, and this board contributes quite heavily to the premium of every employee, and based on those contributions from the employee and the contributions from the board, along with our claims, we do meet at least once a year, when I say we, there's an insurance committee made up of administrators, of all employees, representatives from the Federation of Teachers and School Employees, and our retirees, because we do cover our retirees also. So we do meet at least once a year, we review the entire plan, and we look at where we can possibly tweak or do what we can so that we don't do a great cut in benefits, and we'll be doing that again next month, we'll be meeting for our plan, because our plan is a calendar year, and it goes into effect January one. So that's just a little background on our group health plan, and it's a constant battle with the rising health costs and medical costs, and with, you know, going up on premiums and that type of thing. Mr. Broome, I hope that helps you a little bit?
Thank you, yes, it does.
And on the risk management, we have an actuary that sets our premiums, and this year, the premiums in one particular group of employees, and I'll back up just a minute and say that our employees are grouped into three different groups, we have professional and clerical in one group, bus drivers in another, and then maintenance and custodial and food service in another, and our professional and clerical went down from point seven six to point six five, which created a plus for us, and also, Mr. Gaspard, myself, and our third party administrator, we've been working very, very hard on addressing these claims, working with our employees, trying to get the claims taken care of as quick as we can, and get our employees back to work, and I think all of that just shows off in the savings that we're seeing for this year.
Thank you. I have another question. Could someone explain the sudden increase in administrative alternative program slash admin assistance shown in school administration? Does it really represent an increase of fourteen positions from the previous year?
I'll let Terry get the details, I know the administrative assistants are, it comes out of the teacher's allotment that we allow to basically an in-between assistant principal and a teacher administrative assistant, and, go ahead.
I said, yes, sir.
Okay, all right, Terry, you want to give the specifics of the numbers of that? It does come out of your teacher allotment, correct?
It does, there's no additional staff allotted for these, they have to manage it within the allotment that's given to them.
Okay, go ahead, Terry.
So there were no new positions, this was simply a reclassification to a different budget line that was required by the state, because these administrative assistants didn't have a classroom roster, they required us to put it on a different line of the budget, so they were just moved from one category to another.
And it comes out of the teacher allotment, and is that the discretion of the principal?
Yeah, and it's no additional cost to the system, because they get just teacher salary.
Excellent, that's what I thought, but I wanted to make sure it was cleared everywhere.
Sure.
I believe I understand the assigned for local priorities in the fund balance, or I understand what the assigned for local priorities in the fund balance summary means, but I would appreciate an explanation, just to be sure, is this a money, a reserve for existing planned expenses, or is it available to meet additional services? Could you explain that?
There's a history there, for sure, so, go ahead, Terry.
The definition of it, as we set out in two thousand ten, when the fund balance policy was changed, it's basically assigned for local priorities means all necessary expenses related to the education of students of St. Tammany Parish as determined by the board and the superintendent. It's not a reserve for planned expenses, it's just basically an assignment of the fund balance for educational purposes. We didn't want to, can I elaborate on that? Back in two thousand ten, there was a push to maybe look at unassigned fund balances of school districts, so the board opted to assign our entire fund balance for educational purposes to basically protect it.
And when you're saying there was a look, it was coming from Baton Rouge, from Baton Rouge, looking at our fund balance and trying to almost use that as a negative against the school systems that had a fund balance.
To cut the MFP, basically.
Correct.
I believe I remember those days.
Yes, yes.
So this was basically to make sure that nobody raided our checking account.
It was, right, correct.
Good. All right, moving on to the special funds. In the community disaster loan fund, what are the restrictions on how this money can be spent?
Go ahead, Terry.
That has to be operating expenses of the general fund under the terms of that grant, and it can't be capital in nature, it's generally used for salaries, benefits, supplies, that type of item.
Okay, so this is, supplies, it can be used for salaries or benefits or something like that?
Correct.
Okay, but it's restricted to that, we can't do anything else except that.
You just can't do something capital in nature, building, improvement, things like that.
Great. In the community development block grant construction fund, could someone explain how the amounts received each year are determined, and what projects are accomplished with this fund?
Cameron can answer that.
All right, Ms. Tipton, go ahead.
So the amounts received, are the amount reimbursed or approved to be reimbursed to the St. Tammany Parish school system from federal funds that were made available following Hurricanes Katrina and Rita, from a congressional appropriation through HUD to the state of Louisiana, and the state of Louisiana then allocated the funds to affected entities, including public school systems, municipalities, and other public entities. The portion that the St. Tammany Parish school system was eligible for was approximately nineteen point six million, and this grant covered many costs that were ineligible by FEMA funding guidelines. The money was also intended to help make the system whole from loss and impact due to hurricane events, Katrina and Rita in this case, and this is expected to be the last year that the school system will receive reimbursement from this particular allocation of CDBG funding as we are completing the final project that was approved using these grant funds. Over the years, that money has been used, we've used pretty much all of the nineteen point six, I think we will use all of it, towards repairs at Brock Elementary, the rebuilding of Brooks Curriculum Center, replacement of portable modular classroom buildings that were lost during the hurricane, reconstruction of Salmon High School, additions at Madisonville Junior High, additions at Brock Elementary, and currently the pupil appraisal center, which will finally put the special ed staff that was located there in Slidell back in a permanent home.
Great, so this is money that we've been receiving on an annual basis, basically from the state, federal money through the state, for the Katrina expenses, and we're finally wrapping up Katrina after all these years.
Yes, sir.
It's good to hear. Okay, I have one last question. In March of this year, the board allocated six million dollars from the two thousand thirteen bond premium toward the Mandeville High School expansion. It is not clear in the two thousand thirteen bond construction fund budget where this money is. It is clear in the two thousand eight bond construction fund, and just for clarification, could someone explain the six million dollars, and did it actually come from a premium? What's the story there?
The actual project that it came from was two thousand eight, right, and then the premiums were two thousand thirteen, so why don't you explain both?
Yeah, if you look at the budget for the two thousand thirteen bond construction, if you look at the projected actual result for seventeen eighteen, you will see there's a premium there that is from the drawdown of the two thousand seventeen GO bond issue, so there was a premium with that of three point five million, so that's part of it. The rest of the premium of two point five million was done in prior years, so it's rolled into the fund balance, so it's part of that fund balance, beginning fund balance of seventeen point six million.
Explain what a premium is.
A premium is an amount that's paid in excess of the par of the bonds, that the investors pay to purchase the bond.
So the initial monies came from the four thirty-four project that we didn't did there, which was in the two thousand eight bond issue, and then the premiums added to that to complete the project at Mandeville High, and then we also had work at Madisonville Elementary.
Great, okay, thank you very much, I did, wanted to make sure that, you know, the public could follow the documentation on that. Thank you for this opportunity to comment on the proposed twenty eighteen nineteen budget, and again, I appreciate this opportunity.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Broome. Pete? That's okay.
I know we have another meeting, I was giving this around to go check and see if those parents were here.
Okay, okay.
Sorry about that. Terry King.
Okay.
Thank you very much for giving me time to speak tonight, great discussion tonight, quite a few of the questions that I had have been answered. I do still have some questions concerning the documents that are reported to the public, because obviously that's a great concern to us. As an investigator for the concerned citizens of St. Tammany, we fought very hard to make sure that we could either get an inspector general or some sort of audit process that would be appropriate, and in preparing for this meeting, I read part of the CAFER, part of the Act seven seven four audit that was presented by LaPorte, and then also had some public records that were provided to me by Mr. Javio. Unfortunately, there were huge conflicts in the information that I was reading, and some of the documents that Mr. Javio provided to me, it showed some criminal behavior on parts of a couple of people.
Mr. King, we are not going to get into...
No, I'm not, I'm talking about what was reported in LaPorte's audit. Who's representative from LaPorte here? Because the information they presented to the legislative auditor's office was not complete, it did not have the information concerning the criminal behavior by...
We're talking about the budget.
I'm talking about...
The public.
I'm talking about the reporting.
We're not talking about our auditors, we are speaking tonight.
No, I'm talking about the reporting that has been done, and it's pretty obvious tonight that there's a whole lot of commas and things that y'all are trying to use to obfuscate the process. Then let me finish what I'm trying to say.
I'll give you some leeway on that.
In the audit, in the audit report that they provided, they did not indicate that there had been any issues with any improprieties from people here, which we know that there has been some. They also...
We don't know that, you allege...
Mr. Javio gave it to me. Are you telling me that Mr. Javio was untruthful in his public records?
We are not talking about allegations here tonight, we are talking about the budget.
I'm talking about what is in the audit report, what you are expecting...
We are not here to discuss the audit report, Mr. King.
Okay, unless...
We are here to discuss the budget.
Is your budget truthful?
Yes, our budget is truthful.
Based on past history, I do not believe that your budget can be truthful.
That is your opinion.
Based on past history. You have Ms. Terry Prevost, who approved some of the information that was in the student activity funds with a date that still has not occurred, two separate years. I believe you have people who are falsifying documents and putting stuff in the budget...
Mr. King, I'm sorry.
Do whatever you have to do.
I know you disagree, I don't have to do anything, I'm just going to tell you, you are welcome to speak on the budget.
I'm speaking on the budget, the actual budget, the actual budget, what you have actually spent.
You are not speaking on the eighteen nineteen budget, no, sir, you're not, you're not, you are not speaking on that budget. You are welcome to ask questions on that budget, but I am not going to get into debate or argument with you.
You don't have to get into a debate, I don't want you to debate, I asked you to come to my office and look into some of this stuff previously, and you wouldn't do it.
If you have anything you need to say, you need to go straight to the authorities.
I have.
That's right, then that's exactly where you need to go.
I sent someone this week.
Thank you, Mr. King. Mr. Javio?
James Harland.
Thank you.
My name is James Harland, I'm a businessman, businessman with a doctorate in public policy, I've been a St. Tammany resident for twenty years, and I'm also a member of the St. Tammany Parish Democratic Parish Executive Committee. My comments about the budget relate more to the... My comments about the budget relate more to the paucity of explanation in what is publicly available. It's very clear from this discussion that the administration has, has answers for a lot of questions that people have. But having served on two public company boards, I understand a lot about the governance process, and I, and the, the council here are the elected representatives over the largest and most important enterprises in St. Tammany Parish. A four hundred and twenty million dollar budget annually, where fifteen people are supposed to provide critical input about re, resource allocation, oversight, and direction to, to an experienced and well-compensated professional staff to try to get the best output on behalf of the citizens of St. Tammany Parish. And this is the, this, these pages, which are just basically tables, are the only explanation that I was able to find about a four hundred and twenty million dollar budget. Any public company, even those that have market capitalizations a tenth of what the annual budget of this, of this enterprise is, has to prepare a thorough annual report that includes a management discussion and analysis of past performance and future plans to explain to the owners, in this case, the citizens of St. Tammany Parish, how the budget was prepared, what's in each of the detail, what are the key strategic issues and plans going forward? And you people, as board members, should be insisting that that information in detail is put forth in the budget documents that you receive and, and have to approve by your authority to act on behalf of the citizens of the parish. Now, Mr. Folsa had a, a, a five-slide presentation about high-level budget stuff, but there was nothing about strategy, nothing about, well, we need to put side, put aside money to build something in West St. Tammany, and do we do, do we do, how are we going to fund that strategic priority? Information about, about student teacher ratios, all kinds of educational indicators would be the normal part of any management discussion and analysis if you go to look at any public companies. So why should the citizens of St. Tammany be satisfied and be expected to provide input to you as board members who are their representatives, when there is really no discussion or analysis or explanation of what is fourteen pages of numbers with little explanation? And it, it's clear to me, it's also clear to me, that the folks up here who've been answering have good answers and good explanations. So write it down so that the citizens of this parish, who are spending nearly a quarter of, a half a billion dollars each year, can understand what's going on. Moreover, in any, any, any public company, you are expected to show two pro, two past years and an estimate for a future year. So why shouldn't that be possible? Rather than go, go, you know, year by year and ask people to, to put it together themselves? So that would help people understand and build a lot of trust between the citizens and the administration, and allow the board to do a better job in its function of oversight and control of these professional managers.
Mr. Horn, just one comment about the planning and everything. We do do that at our monthly committee as a whole meetings, so we do, I mean, you mentioned like planning, construction, so we actually have monthly meetings on all those. Not, I'm not all disagreeing with you, I'm just explaining to you what the process is during the month.
Well, I would, I, I appreciate that, but in any enterprise, the budget is an absolutely formative document, and there's no reason to separate capital from operating, particularly when people focus on the budget.
No, I understand, but you just said that we don't have discussion, my slides didn't include talking about Mandeville, I mean, that's kind of what we do in those construction meetings.
Okay, but, but to some extent, there should be an annual reporting process.
Right.
Now, the other question that I have, not having followed the school board in detail, is why you operate as, quote, a committee as a whole? Because every public corporation has people who are on the audit committee, I've chaired audit committees, they have a compensation committee, they have a strategy committee, and those committees are divided to focus and spend more time on issues so that, so that there is effective oversight by the board onto the professional management. And I, I, I hear this operation as a committee as a whole, and I know you spend, you meet every two weeks to deal with a lot of administrative and explosions and other type of things, and, and that's important. But I, I would suggest that in terms of good governance and oversight practice, you consider establishing committees so that you can have a more thorough and, and detailed engagement with the oversight responsibilities that this board has. Moreover, I think the board must have a direct oversight of the au, internal audit function and the ability to engage professionals reporting to the board, not to the, to the superintendent, to address issues that are, and, and that are important to the board in the execution of its duties. We, I've had that, all public companies provide that type of resource to the board that's supposed to represent and be an effective overseer of professional management. And I for one also think that you folks, and you should be paid more for the, this is the largest and most important enterprise in St. Tammany Parish. It deals with our most important asset, our children, and it's important to their future. So the effectiveness of the board in, in, in holding these professional managers to task to be efficient and effective needs, requires more resources than you're currently getting, and I encourage the budget to include that.
That's state law.
That's state law.
Well, state laws can be changed.
Absolutely.
That's what we have elections.
Absolutely. I just wanted to clarify that it would be...
We would love for you to help change that.
Now, I do have, I do, outside of those process things, I would like to understand why, in the vocational education line, is six million dollars, which seems like a very small number in the context of a hundred and seventy million for general and seventy million for special education. And because what, what one hears is that a lot of people aren't going on to college, I've had people move out of my buildings because they can't find welders locally. And, and so what, what, what is the rationale for that level of priority for what's called vocal, vocational education in this budget?
Dr. Sanford, you want to talk about the technical?
Well, we do get supplemental course allocation dollars and CDF funds, which are career development funds, that we are allowed to supplement instruction, so much of that, much of those dollars are being paid for tuition at North Shore Technical for our students in career technical fields. It's very difficult for us to find professionals, teachers, in areas such as automotive and nursing, because they require certain credentials, so we do have to pay tuition for all of the students taking those particular courses. We have line items for things such as family and consumer science and agriculture that are not covered by our supplemental course allocations.
But I, if I understand correctly, then you're saying the business of vocational education is farmed out to the community colleges and you just pay tuition, is that what I...
No, sir, we have, we have some of our own staff who are certified and can provide career technical education, but there are some specialty areas, such as we're required to hire certified nurses to teach things such as CNA programs, which are the Certified Nursing Assistant Programs, and they provide the experts in order to teach those dual enrollment courses.
Okay, well, I, I just, it just seems to me like a rather low, low allocation, given, given the distribution of, of outcomes for high, high school students in this, in this parish. I think I've taken my time, but I, I do, I would admonish the board to think about making these reports much more thorough and detailed. It, it's a hard time to first pass through, but once you've done it once, you have the template for all those finds, and, and it'll be a long document with a lot of details, but it's clear to me that the details to put in those footnotes are there, and, and it would certainly help everybody understand what's happening with this four hundred and twenty-five million dollar budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Jabia?
Cherie Couture.
She chooses not to speak, okay? All right, and, and that was everyone...
And she knows where we are, she'll be back to come see us another time.
That's everybody on the list? Is there anyone else that would like to come and speak on the proposed budget? Yes, sir. Just state your name, please. And I think, is there a...
I ain't filled out a card, I...
No, but I think you're supposed to write your name down, am I right, correct? Or, okay.
Is Gary, G-A-R-Y, Leonard, L-E-O, N-A-I-D? The superintendent mentioned in his slide presentation, and that's why I'm asking the question, because it wasn't before the presentation, that the budget, as far as money's coming in from property taxes, is a static number. There are over a thousand properties that come online into the assessor's office, and money coming from those properties comes into the system. With over sixty percent of our millage coming into the school system from those properties, how could it be a static amount of money from one year to the next?
I'm gonna let Teri answer that, and I actually had that same question of her today, because if you saw, I think the Times-Picayune today had the story about the square foot values in the homes and how much it increased in St. Tammany Parish in the last year, and then they did versus Katrina, and it was a huge increase. So I actually took that same article to Teri and said, why, why are we doing that? So talk about what the assessor's office and what you did.
We actually get about forty-four percent of the budget, a, a bit of the ad valorem.
Right, not sixty.
But the reason I, I did budget an increase is because the assessor recommended that we didn't, based on the properties are still coming in, and it's better to be under on revenues, because you don't want to be over. So he suggested we budget the same as last year, so that's what I did.
So realistically, then, it could be a lot more money than static? And when would be, when would be your exact time that you would know that? So we, you know, like to... And when would that be put into the budget? Right, that's what I was...
Well, the final budget, I mean, the final ad valorem roll will probably be around Nov, in November, but it's based off collections, so, you know, it's how much you collect of the money. Usually we collect about ninety-five percent, so it's not going to be a five percent variance. The most, it would probably be up, assuming we collected a hundred percent of the, the roll he has right now, would be maybe a million dollars.
Extra.
From what I've, yeah, extra.
But that recommendation to standstill was based on the assessors...
Right, because they're still revising properties, and he just, he says he just sees properties, the growth not there, so I just took his recommendation. He sent it out to all the governments, and that's what we did.
But with your figures being, it could be close to a million dollars, when would that be incorporated into the actual funds into the budget?
It would be in the final budget at the end. If it's not more than five percent, we don't generally amend, but we always amend at the end to come to the actual. So the last budget of, of this fiscal year.
But we would have no problem reporting to the board when we did actually get the numbers from the assessor's office, just to give everybody an update. Okay, that answered my question. I had the same.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Belinda Parker Brown, and thank you for allowing me this opportunity to speak. I have, just sitting here listening, wow, I have a lot I want to say, but I'm going to make it real short. I have a question. My children have, on Fridays, I think they ask me, you know, for a dollar, or two dollars sometime to, to wear jeans, and it's called Black and Gold Day. Where does that money go?
We, let me... We do four fundraises a year. Committees are formed, made up of administrators, community people, teachers, principals, probably fifteen or twenty organizations come and present, and out of those organizations, we pick four or five each year that we do a fundraiser. The Black and Gold is the Children's Museum, and that's where that is every year, it's pretty much a parish-wide initiative, the money goes towards that, we've done that every year to the museum. The other three are different community organizations, not, all nonprofits that are in St. Tammany Parish. People come and present, we choose one, you bring a dollar, as you said, wear the jeans, and that money, we present the check here to the school board meeting every year. So we do four a year. Black and Gold is one of the four. Hope House is one, I mean, I'm trying to think, I mean, there's many different ones that we did.
Well, thank you for that clarification, because I always thought that it was for the child, for my children's school.
No, ma'am, it's, we send the flyer home, the whole works, it talks about the museum. On each one of, whatever that fundraiser is, we send a flyer home on what that one is, we show a video that shows what that nonprofit is, and then the money, every penny of it goes directly to that organization.
Okay, my other question is, is that, I heard it mentioned here tonight that we have, is it a miscellaneous, miscellaneous fund or a slush fund? How much money is in that fund?
No, I don't...
What, is it miscellaneous?
It, it's revenue we receive that's classified as miscellaneous, it's not a fund. It's just money that comes in that doesn't fit, we are given a code for revenues, a, a set of codes that the Department of Ed requires us to use, and there is no code for some of these items, so they give us a code miscellaneous, and that's where it goes.
How, how much is it?
Um, I don't know what we're budgeting, I want to say it was three hundred, give me one second. It was three hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars for seventeen eighteen. So it goes up and down, it just depends.
Are we collecting interest on that?
Yes, ma'am. It goes into our general fund, which is an interest-bearing account.
Wow, seem like we can write our teachers a check out of there, huh? One more thing. In the previous years, we have had internal audits, auditors, I'm sorry. Are there any provision for one in this budget?
Yes, ma'am, it's added back to the budget this year. It's a line item in the budget, it's added back.
Okay, it's a line item in the budget this year?
Yes, ma'am, to add back.
Okay, so will, will, will we be hiring one?
Yes, ma'am, as soon as the budget's approved, it's approved by this board, we would start the process.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Barrios?
Lee Barrios, retired teacher, sorry, didn't get here in time to, to sign up, had a crisis going on.
Uh-oh.
Uh, I have one, one point I would like you to clarify, if you can't tonight, I'd actually like it written in stone, and it's been in my craw for a number of years, because I've heard school board members say, using different figures, but the most recent was at the, was at the, the Alliance Forum, and one of the school board members stated that eighty-five percent of the budget goes toward teachers' salaries and benefits. Okay, not only is that completely inaccurate, but what, what is meant by teachers, by teachers? Are they teachers who teach? Are they certificated teachers that are working in administration? Are they substitute teachers? Are they retired teachers? Because it really isn't clarified in the budget, but it looks very bad for teachers. The public does not like to hear when teachers are saying they would love raises, or when they get raises, that eighty-five percent of the budget goes toward teachers' salaries and benefits. And they really don't like that benefit word, because they think, you know, it's a giveaway.
So what's your, is your question?
I'd like for you all to come to a conclusion when you make a statement like that.
Well, who made the statement, Ms. Barrios? Okay.
I don't remember specifically saying just teachers, but apparently I did, and it's not just teachers, it's all employees.
But I've heard over and over, over a number of years, and when I ask us, I've asked, talked to several school board members over the last couple of years, where does that number come from? I don't think there's an understanding, but I think it looks bad for teachers, it is bad for teachers. They are what makes the school system work. Get rid of them, they're gone.
Well, nobody certainly disagrees with that, so tell me what number you want, I mean, what you want, and I'll make sure you get it.
Well, if you're going to throw that number around...
I'm not throwing the number out, I'm asking you what number you want me to get for you, and I'll get it from Teri and make sure we present it.
What percentage of the budget are actually teachers? And if you define that, do you mean active teachers working in the system?
Teachers' salaries?
Not administrators?
Right.
Who are certificated teachers? Okay, but those who actually teach in the classroom, or librarians actually teach those things.
Okay, so Jeb?
I was just gonna, just clarify, yeah, that, that under the teaching category is anybody that their teaching certificate is required for their job. So you've got coordinators, you've got librarians, you've got guidance counselors, you've got all of those people that come onto... all of those people that come under teacher. And I think the way Terry does it in the budget is employees' salaries and benefits, and that's the, the number we've always used, because that's what it is. And it's in the, it's in the higher to mid 80s is what our salaries and benefits.
So, that's employees.
For all employees. That's all employees. I don't know that we have broken down.
You want a more breakdown of just teachers.
If you're going to make statements like that, when people say, "Wow, that's a huge budget." Well, 80, 75, 85% of the budget is for teachers and their benefits. That's all.
I actually have a number for teachers and administrators, it's 66% of the budget.
Yeah, I'm not interested in administrators, because it's teachers in the classroom.
Right.
That the unions represent, for instance.
But we can calculate that number for you.
The administrators are part of the teaching, but you just want the teachers, right?
I just would like the teachers.
I can calculate that.
Okay, good deal. We'll get that.
It's for the public clarification.
Yeah, I understand.
The other one that I know you all are working, it's an ongoing and new thing, is the, the resource officers and the mental health providers.
You're right.
And the reason this really came to my mind was, last night, I attended, I believe it was last night, I attended the Abida Springs Town Council meeting, and the deputy from the sheriff's office, who works, is now the policeman for the department, introduced some of the new resource officers for Abida Middle, Abida Elementary, and several others. And so, a discussion and question period was sort of had as to how this works. And it was brought out, and the mayor took me aside later, and he had some questions about how this works. My understanding, right or wrong, when I came to your last meeting, was that every school would have, you'd hired, or every school would have a resource officer and a mental health provider. And I assumed, or thought for some reason, that those were from the sheriff's office and they were going to be paid by the school system. And that, that figure came, your first figure was $4 million. My understanding now is, or at least this is what the public thinks, and the mayor of Abida and Madisonville, and some of the officers there, were trying to explain, that first of all, the question is, where's the funding going to come in the future? Because some of the towns have decided to use some of their police officers, it's not all sheriff's deputies, their police officers, but they're using details, because at this point, they don't want to hire people and then maybe have to lose them.
Correct, correct.
It was also brought to my attention that I know for sure, the Madisonville mayor said that they're paying part of, and I guess it's because they're assigning duty officers, so they're paying part of those expenses, that it's not all coming from the school system.
I'm gonna let Mr. Javie give you, we gave a really thorough update, I think, right at our last committee, as a whole meeting, on all those summer details, summer SROs, depending upon where the school is, determines which law enforcement agency we use. City of Slottell uses. Slottell Schools. So, I'm gonna let Pete give you the overview of the whole thing and talk about the funding part.
Just in general, because I don't have the specifics here with me, but just to, to let you know that the board approved SROs and mental health providers in all of our schools. We said at that meeting, when the board approved it, that this would probably be a year and a half to two-year process to get everybody on board, and working with all the law enforcement agencies throughout the parish, some of them were able to provide detailed officers and not a true SRO, School Resource Officer. That, that gave us great confidence and great hope that we would have at least an officer in every school, and they've worked with us. So, detail officers, just like you see a detail in Walmart, they get an hourly rate and we pay that hourly rate for their detail, just like they would say, the same rate that they, that Walmart would pay, for example. An SRO, that is a negotiated contract with that particular jurisdiction, and most of the time, as you say in Madisonville, we, we use those officers for 10 out of the 12 months. So, we pay their salaries and benefits for 10 12ths of their salary, and the, the jurisdiction will pick up the other two months. So, I think that's how maybe the Madisonville thing told you, they pay some and others don't. So, in general, that's how it works, and as Mr. Fols said, the, the officers that are provided are provided through the jurisdiction that governs those particular schools. So, the schools that are in the sheriff's jurisdiction, sheriff's offices cover that. If they're in the Slottell area, Slottell Police Department, Mandeville PD, Madisonville PD, which one, Pearl River PD, all of those. Folsom PD did not have the funds, so the sheriff agreed to pick up those two officers for those two schools.
Why don't you talk briefly about the MHP, I mean, yeah, the MHPs as well?
And the MHPs, we did post all of those positions at our job fair, and there was one for every school. And we were able to employ all 55 MHPs for the start of this school year. Some of those came from existing MHPs that were part-time, some came from outside applicants, and some of those positions were filled from within, from some of our own people that were in other positions, but that were certified to be an MHP. They were, they were hired in that position. So, we're very, very fortunate. This is what I would call soft money. The board agreed that this would be a temporary fix, and for this to go forward, we would need some permanent funding, and the board will be addressing that in the future.
And I will say, Ms. Barrios, and you know this too, the, because of your experience in the schools, the mental health as, provider aspect of it is, as, to us, is as important as the SRO part of it. And so, I, I've been in the schools a lot in the first two weeks, I've been in the community a lot, a lot of different service organizations, and I know a lot of attention's been given to the SROs, but there's a lot of really good appreciation of the mental health commitment that this board member's made as well. We all know the challenges of, of mental health in Saint Tany Parish. So, I think that part of it is just as important, and hopefully, we'll be able to put together a package that can continue both of those, because it has been tremendously well-received across this parish from all stakeholders.
And they don't get the recognition, because it's very private.
Correct, right.
So, could you tell me, in this new proposed budget, what the total cost in the, as stated in the budget, is for the mental health providers, the 55, I guess? And then, your costs this coming year?
The SROs, Terry, and then tell where the monies came from, from this one time.
Mr. Fols, I want to point out that we had some SROs already.
Correct, high schools and.
Existing, and that were already in the budget.
Thank you.
But we had, we had estimated about $2 million for the additional SROs, but Terry has the final numbers.
Yeah, it's actually a separate budget. The funding, we're funding it partially with the BP oil spill money, 4 million of that, and then we transferred a million in from general fund. Like you said, there was a million already in general fund. So, the mental health providers, the salaries is about 2.7 million, and there's some benefits listed there, and the resource officers are about 2 million. So, the total expenditures of that fund is $5 million with those two, two salaries.
And just everyone here, the BP money was money that we received a while back, and there was been some conversation to use it before for reoccurring funds, and we fought hard not to do that, and we saved it for a rainy day, and we thought, this board and staff believed that the MROs, the decimos and the MHPs, those two things were worthy of this rainy day fund usage, and that's been proven by the community support that we've received from that.
So, is there any plan? I know you said you're hoping for the 2.75 increase. Good luck with that.
Yeah, I know.
But.
I still can hope.
Is there any plan, before this year is up, to have that, that funding determined for the next year and maybe for ongoing?
That's what we're hoping for, and we're meeting with our bonding attorney and looking at different options that we'll be bringing to this board before the end of, I think, the end of this calendar year. We'll be looking at some options there that would be permanent funding, so that we can beat and others can go back to these law enforcement people and say, "We can hire these people now. We don't need details. They can be permanent employees of your jurisdiction, and we now have the permanent money to hire them, so we can do all SROs instead of a mixture of SRO." And we're happy to have the details, and we know that law enforcement pulled it off really quick, but long-term, we'd love to have permanent everywhere, as well as solidify the MHPs, and that's what we'd be bringing to the board before the end of the calendar year.
Okay, and they'll be eligible as employees for benefits and, and insurance, like other employees or not?
The, the SROs are employees of those local agencies.
Okay.
The MHPs are our employees and are eligible for our benefits.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Hello. My name is Tammy Laney. I'm going to be very quick. I just want to say, most of you know that I am running for school board, and I'm a retired teacher. So, some of the things that we, that were mentioned here about teacher pay, many teachers didn't even realize they had a pay raise, and they've still been saying that they didn't. And I know, we showed videos in the school, we explained, I know all of that, but I don't know how. I guess maybe talking about seeing the money, you know, it wasn't really there. But my biggest reason for coming up here is just to say, once I said that I was running for the board, that's when I heard things that totally broke my heart about the public's perception of the board, the dirty politics, the lying, the lack of integrity.
Ms. Laney.
Oh, we're talking about budget. Okay, let me go.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, sorry. So, my point in saying that is, if y'all, you have the answers, like they said, I can't believe that anybody's doing anything deceitful, I refuse to believe that, but if you don't make it public for everybody to see, they're going to keep talking, and it just builds animosity between the public. I'm just saying, I'm only saying that about the budget. So, if we could just possibly make it so it's clear to understand, black and white, we have an internal audit, all those things, I think it would just like make y'all's life a whole lot easier. And the other thing I was going to say is, please don't get teachers in trouble for asking for supplies, because I know that they're not supposed to ask parents for supplies, but it has become less and less and less, and it's very hard and it's disheartening. And my last little comment, I'm very thankful for the MHPs, and I just hope that in that, I know it's budgeting, but that we could try to get our counselors to be able to counsel and do less administration stuff. Okay, thank you.
And I'm gonna let you go, but that's one thing, we were really, really clear on this, MHPs, they can't serve duty.
Good.
They can't be at the bus stop.
Good.
They can't go to lunch duty, because I see their lunch duty as being out, talking to kids.
Right.
And kids being able to come to them.
And seeing what's going on, so they might.
We met with the principals and the MHPs and said exactly what you're saying about that.
Awesome. Okay, thank you.
Hello, I'll be quick. My name is Meg Hackney. I'm running for school board as well. I have a question about funding for a school in Madisonville, for a high school, just because, I mean, I'm sure that Mr. Drucker's been dealing with this for years, but it, the inbox is just ding, 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 ding. People want to know, what is going on with a high school? Why isn't there one?
We are, we are not talking about that tonight. That is not in the budget, and that will be something.
So, it's definitely not in the budget for next year. There's no plans for buying land or anything next year.
Well, you have to understand, there is, would you like to elaborate on that?
We don't receive money for capital projects. We'd have to do another bond issue. Is there a plan for a bond issue?
We are not discussing that tonight.
Like Mr. Fols said, they'll be discussing that before the end of this, this year. But not in, nothing public, that people could attend? Or it will be?
We haven't discussed it, and we have to discuss everything in the public. So, when Mr. Fols presents some information to us, and didn't you say?
Before the end of the calendar year.
Before this calendar year, to look at all the needs throughout the entire parish, then, then they will, he will present some proposals before this board.
Okay. That's great to know. Second question pertains to transportation. I've gotten a bunch of comments from constituents in my area.
But it, that's not on?
Well, it's part of the budget. I mean, you, we have, do we have money budgeted for more buses to pay more bus drivers? Or Ms. Drucker had mentioned at the Alliance, that we don't have enough bus drivers, people who want to drive buses in our area? You said that there weren't a lot of people who want to drive buses.
I would be glad to have Mr. Alphonso hang around and talk to you after the meeting. He's the director of transportation.
Okay.
Let him hook up with you.
Who is this?
Right here, Steve.
Okay.
Let him hook up with you and answer some of those questions, and maybe you can help us get right information out.
That would be great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Seeing no hands up? I'm sorry?
Also in the Democratic Parish Executive Committee, and I'm not running for school. I, I just wanted to follow up on what Mr. Harland said and also what the teacher said. As far as your books, I, I assume you're all trying to do the right thing with the money, and what most businesses do, and I've helped many businesses do, is set up the books so that you take that three years running, you have your actual plus your budget and what you're doing, and you include things like seasonality. You know, you might have certain expenditures in the fall that change in the spring, around Christmas, if you had a particular flooding event or something in some part of the parish. And what happens is, we all get to see it, and you get to see it in a way that, once it gets outside of what seems normal for that time of year, per student, per whatever those are, the factors upon which you budget, it will automatically highlight to you that there's something to manage, right? And then you have to investigate it. And I think that would be helpful for all of you to set your books up the way that most organizations do, so that it's very noticeable within a three-year period, are you within the trend for that time of year, for those kind of expenditures? And by having what Mr. Harland was talking about, that every item is, every heading is described, what's in it, so we could all understand it, you can understand it, it helps you manage your budget. And so, I was often called in to help businesses that were struggling with their budget, because the numbers weren't talking to them. It does take a little effort to set it up, to have it do that. You tend to need to look at five to 10 years to do a good job of setting up what seasonality is, what your budget should be based upon, number of students, so forth, so on. But once you set that up, it's very easy to run a three-year trend, and it will automatically, you don't have to wait for someone else to explain it to you every month. What did you actually spend? How is that fitting the trend over three years? Is there something to look into? And then it's very easy for a budgeting committee to say, "Let's see what's happening in this line item." That's all I got to say, but.
Thank you.